I printed it.
Oh, this is ready.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, it was what was emailed. And then some Madako stuff that I found helpful today and I thought I'd share with everybody. For usernames.
Who was that? Was that you, Allison?
No, Shannon Singer was there too. We didn't all go together. We all went with our different groups, but we were all there.
There was a lot of people that went to it.
Yeah.
Houston, that we saw him like the last time he was in business.
Yep, so did we.
Yeah.
He was good.
Yeah, we laughed really hard. My cheeks hurt really bad by the end of the night.
We upping Renan, Carmen?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right, seven o'clock. I'll call this special meeting of Mercer County Commission to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I do.
Uh, signed by Jean. Any discussion? Seeing none. Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All right, our motion passes. Uh, item on tonight's special meeting is the 2024 budget.
Okay, there was some question about the motion you had made Travis about money set aside for future wage adjustments.
Okay.
It was, uh, I've already heard that it, uh, that applied only to the, uh, did not apply to all departments, and I think you're you were meaning that it applies to all departments.
Well.
Yes or no?
So my thought process, it would apply to any department. However, the safest place to put it was in the general fund because the general fund can be transitioned to any other fund. Um, so if we made adjustments to the landfill, which is a special uh, enterprise fund, that's different. We couldn't transfer anything into it. However, if you needed to raise rates, you could do it in landfill. As far as the road goes, if, um, the road department, um, had some of the wage adjustments in it, if we didn't use all the funds in the road that were levied, we wouldn't have to transfer anything, but if the fund went negative because of those wage adjustments, then you could move in from the general. That's my understanding. So having it in the general allows you to put it where you need it to because the general can go any direction, whereas other funds can't.
In a nutshell, that was my basic understanding what you meant.
Hmm. So that's why I said to put it in the general. Not that if you weren't part of the general fund, you wouldn't be part of that. Um, if there was any spot raises. And I had people call me about that too, and that was my same explanation to them, so.
Um, the other, another item was, uh, M- Mercer County Economic Development. There was discussion on that. Where were we on that?
We, in my motion, we put in fifty thousand. Did we put any wording in? I would like, if I need to, I'd like to go back and amend my wording that I'd like to see it where we have some control on where we're gonna put the money. I mean, I mean how it's gonna be allocated, I should say.
So the other thing with the budget is the budget. However, we talked about if we were doing any allocation, regardless of who it was to, we should have the ability to put contingencies or requirements on it. Um, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean it's automatic. That's kind of why I gave the example, like when we have something break down and it's over a certain amount, they're required to get a P O. If we wanna have requirements on our allocations, we can make those requests, from my understanding.
We can, but there are none right now.
So I mean, if, if, if there's a request for fifty thousand, we, we write a check just for fifty thousand? You know, we put it in there?
Well, it would still go through our bills because it would be anything that we are authorized to pay.
As of right now, the way it stands, come January one, we write a check to, uh, MACAD for fifty thousand.
That's the same thing we do for the Fair Board?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, whatever the amount is.
Whatever, that's what I'm saying. But it's automatic on that? Okay.
And I was asked if there would be contingencies on, on that money, and I was, I said, no. We write the check on Jan-, well, I'll call it January one, whatever. Do you wanna call it, I don't care if it's the third, that's Monday, but we write that check and yeah. For the lack of sunny facetious, they can buy popsicle sticks with it.
Hmm. Well, then how would we put that in the budget that we want contingencies on it?
I don't know. I was just asked.
I wonder if I had to amend my mo-, I made my motion to do that.
Well, maybe it should be, uh, a county policy that if whatever, whatever entity has an allocation, that that allocation isn't paid until it's approved by the commission, regardless of who it is.
Well, it would be, they would have to submit a request, and then we would okay that request.
Right.
Uh, but that would be probably.
You know, they do have to, they do have to request it, and they have to request it by email, so that we have that request.
Okay.
But the only difference I think is, we bring it before you guys. But I, right now, like he's in fire, gets like six hundred, and and they just request it in January, and then we
Well, right, they, they request it, and we, I mean, even if the Fair Board says, you know, we request our fifty thou-, I, I'm using the number, is it fifty thousand we allocated for the Fair Board? Okay, I don't wanna be saying the wrong.
The Fair Board is sixty-one, sixty-one thousand.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say the wrong number here and get jumped. Okay, so sixty-one thousand, all they do is say we want our sixty-one thousand, and then we write them the check.
Yes. And, and it, it does go through the commission, you guys.
That's correct, but it's, it's, we just.
Yes, that's all it has to do is, but they have to request it, yes.
And now with, with MACAD, it'd be the same thing.
Yes.
Okay, but we still have to prove it, Don.
So my question is, since you set aside fifty thousand for the spare fare card for the
MACAD?
MACAD. Do you have to give them fifty thousand? I mean, you put it in the budget for that, but if funds would be short or things would be looking tight, just because it's set aside for them, do you have to give them the whole fifty thousand? And I, I'm just asking, is there
Well, you don't have.
Or maybe, you know.
You don't have to, but yeah, politically, it's, you know, it's like telling someone, I'm gonna give you twenty dollars come the first of the month, and then come the first of the month, you say, no, I'm not gonna.
I only got eighteen, is that okay?
Well, or whatever, you know, so it, it's.
The motion was to give them fifty thousand.
Correct, that's what I said. Yeah, that's what I said. I wondered if there was, we were to add, change the motion and make additions or, uh, uh, amendments to it or whatever. That was my question. If you wanted, like, say they wanna come in and ask for ten thousand, we, we okay it. If you wanna ask for another twenty thousand, we okay it. Rather than just fifty thousand, but that's kind of a question I had.
I guess, I mean, we're the commission, we decide where those funds go, so if they request it and it comes in front of us, we either put conditions on at that time, or we reserve the right to put conditions on at this point, and we probably don't know what those conditions are right now. Unless you have an idea of what you're thinking for conditions.
No, I was just asked. And I said, no. I was just asked, do we just write them a, a check? Or do they have to make like a request for ten thousand, and then later on another twenty-five and until they, and we okay each one of those expenditures, or can they just request the fifty grand? And I said, yeah, to the best of my knowledge, when we appropriate uh, funds for an entity and they come and request those funds, we give them the check. It's hard to say at that point that, you know, there's stipulations at that time. We, we should have had them in place beforehand, is what I'm also getting at.
Okay.
But I was, I was just asked about it, so I'm, I'm just bringing it forward.
Is that something, we, we can also work on that in the next two months also.
Yeah, I mean, we, we set a budget for, um, you know, for revenues and expenses.
Yeah.
And anything between now and the end of the year. You know, we can modify any of those. I mean, it's, we can't collect any more money, so that our revenues are set.
Right.
As far as taxation goes, but what we spend it on. We can move that around, and we do that throughout the year. Like, if we look at you know, whether we buy a, a blade.
Or a dog.
Or a dog, or, you know. So there's, there's, we have an outline, which is the budget, and then we have to make sound decisions throughout the year. Um, and what I've always told people is that just because it's in the budget, that doesn't mean it's automatically approved. It means there's a holding place for it. If we make that decision, then yes, but that's why my thought on an allocation was that we would, they would have to request it, and then we would see it, and we would say yes or no. But I get what you're saying is that if we put on conditions after the fact, that's kind of a you know, a backhanded slap, so to speak, but if we make those decisions between now and the end of the year that says anybody that requests an allocation, there may be a condition on it, as in it has to be used for this, or something along these lines. What, um, Rick had talked about the last meeting, as far as the Fair Board goes, there's state law that dictates what they can and can't spend it on. Um, to my knowledge, there's nothing like that for MACAD. But, so um, the other thing with MACAD is that it's a board, we have representative from the commission that's on there. There's other cities that have, you know, members on there, so it's not like Buster and Beaver just come in and say, we're gonna spend it on this. There, there's, there's a board that approves that. Um, no different than the library board makes decisions, the ambulance board makes decisions, the airport authority makes decisions. Um, they all get money, so I don't wanna say we don't trust anybody, but if we wanna have conditions on what to use it for, that's, that's our prerogative, so. Any other questions?
Not on that one.
Not on that one?
I don't have any more on MACAD, the MACAD allocation.
My question next one is on the healthcare. I, um, I'd like to see us go back to the, not, um, in my opinion, I would like to see us go back to our, our original healthcare. The money's, um, you know, we're paying two hundred dollars, I'd like to go back to that. One thing is, is like, for instance, a one-year thing, the other thing is, is other people paid this money. For example, I'm using myself. I didn't pay anything to it, and I'm gonna get it, uh, my insurance paid, and I'm not comfortable with that. There's people that earned or paid that money, and I think it should go into a fund, kept there until we can figure out a way a fair and equitable, equitable way to put that where it needs to go, rather than just dump this and it's gone. That's my opinion on that one.
Don, Don, you and Gwyneth mentioned that it's still getting funds in and still being used. Where are those funds coming from and how is it being used?
That fund right now is still being used because everything from, sorry. Everything that comes in for FICA and Medicare still goes in and out of that account.
Twenty-one forty-five?
Or, health insurance, sorry, yes, it's health insurance.
It is, it goes in and gets paid out again, goes in and gets paid out.
Right, right now, yes.
Is that fund twenty-one forty-five?
Twenty-one, twenty-nine thirty-five.
Twenty-one forty-five is organized roads, I think. So, so basically, the way it is now is that
Yep.
ninety percent of the premium is paid by the county, so ninety percent, regardless of where you're at in the budget, gets put into that fund for health insurance, then the ten percent of the employees gets taken out of their check, gets put into that fund, and then when we have premium due to um, Pers Sanford Health, then you, then it's paid.
Yep.
So it goes in and it goes out so that we all know that
So it's tracked.
X number of money went in for health insurance, X number of money went out. That's why that fund is still used.
And is, yeah, and as far as I know, that fund will never not be used.
Because we're doing it that way for tracking purposes, right?
Exactly. So that money will, basically.
Right.
Yeah, how much?
Roughly eight hundred thousand.
I guess, but my question is, is like, I'm gonna use Jim for an example, he's been here a long time. Okay, the money is in this account. I mean, it goes in and out for health insurance. My question is, is that, you know, it's like, there was this money that's, uh, that was allocated to difference between nineteen, ninety percent, and a hundred percent, that extra ten percent. I get it, it's held in that account, but how much is that? And can we put it in someplace that can be used for?
No.
You can't take it out of there because it needs to be used for healthcare.
It has, the only thing that it can be used for is health insurance.
If they, this was a fund that was set up where employee money went into.
Well, so, I wouldn't call it employee money. It was premiums regardless if it was self-insured or insured through an outside plan. Those were the premiums that were paid by individuals for their portion of health insurance.
And that's when we were self-insured.
When we were self-insured, and then it's still used the same way as now, except when we were self-insured, we were required to have a reserve on hand. Um, now that you have an outside health insurance, they hold that reserve, but we never see it. We don't have, 'cause insurance is set up that you pay your premiums, and then when you have medical expenses, you have your deductible, and then when you go over that deductible, then they cover it, or there's portions of the plan, so Yeah. it's, whether we're self-insured or we're using some, they still have that reserve as an insurance company.
We're basically self-insured, they're just.
And the reason why we still have that money sitting there is because when we were self-funded, we did need to keep it there
Correct.
for so long because it was still paying off those claims, and we wanted to make sure that that money was there. But it's been a long time. Go ahead, Gwyneth.
Correct, but.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, but what goes on here is we got a fund that was being used for a, uh, one purpose, and now it got switched to another purpose, in a, so to speak. Insurance, the.
Health insurance.
We're still self-funded for the.
We just hired Sanford as administrator though.
Nope, not for that.
But that's in a different fund, though?
Nope, same fund.
So they just manage it? What about dental and division?
So we would still have a requirement in there for
For that stuff to cover for Blue Cross.
So we couldn't go below that?
Right, and what did we figure goes in and out of there? Last year, we figured, was it like seventy? I can't remember. It was less than a hundred thousand dollars, though, I believe, was what we needed to keep.
How many employees, when I looked on the Daco's website today, it looks like we have it, there reported said eighty employees, but how many employees do we actually have? Total. Do you know?
Employees that we have total?
Total. Because for this health insurance, did we figure, did you guys figure when you did this, that every employee would take health insurance?
I don't know if every employee is eligible for a health insurance.
Okay, so all eligible employees, because if we do cover a hundred percent, there are employees that don't take it now that are going to sign up during open enrollment.
Yep.
And so I just wanna make sure that the amount is, like, the max amount is there for eligible employees, be, so it's not a surprise.
I think that we figured that if everybody jumped on board because we have eight hundred thousand dollars sitting in that account, we would be okay, right?
Okay, right now, right now, I show that you're gonna transfer a hundred fourteen thousand from that account.
Yep.
And you have sixty-three employees who are in health insurance right now.
Yep.
And there's seventy-two that are eligible.
Okay.
So that leaves nine employees that could pick up the health insurance. So seven of those employees pick up the health, the dental and division, you're looking at a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars that they're gonna, I don't have the county health insurance. If we're gonna pay a hundred percent, I'm gonna pick it up. And so will the other ones who don't. With picking up the balance of the employees, and this is Jean's math, which is not gonna be accurate, so don't hold me to it. I got about a hundred and thirty-six thousand is what the county's gonna have to pick up.
Yeah, now is that in addition to the hundred and fourteen, or is that with the hundred and fourteen?
This has got nothing to do even with the hundred and fourteen.
Okay.
This is a hundred and eighty-four for me, the seven that are, the seven of the nine, I didn't even figure all nine. And a hundred and thirty-six for you comes to three hundred and twenty thousand, and you transferred a hundred and fourteen.
Well.
And if all nine, and I didn't figure the total premium amount, I use like a hundred and seventy dollar average because of people not picking it all up.
What do we figure it was?
I just wanted to make sure that I'm in all the chaos of this budget season, that that was, because there are employees that are gonna pick it up if we do this.
My personal opinion, I, I don't work on that side, but we've been looking at this enough to know that even if those nine jump on board, that we still have enough in that health insurance fund to cover them.
Oh, I agree with that, but it's gonna run out within under three years.
Well, this is only set up for one year, though.
And so then you're gonna tell all the employees after one year, they gotta start paying another ten percent?
No, Tr- Travis said that we were gonna, his plan was that maybe we could work them back into the ten percent, a little out of time. But there's also the possibility.
Well, it, I mean, we have to review it. I mean, you have to see what happens.
And I've had mixed reviews, I guess, from employees. Some think it's a great idea, and others are like, I don't want my insurance paid because in the past, it got paid, and then it got slapped back on them the next year, so it.
I wasn't here when that happened, so yeah, but I've heard his stories, yeah.
Yeah, and so that was just a fear.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I.
So the thing with the health insurance, so.
Upfront thing, as I'm not in favor of covering a hundred percent of the insurance.
Okay, so then let me, I'm just gonna throw this out there. I like to play devil's advocate, you guys all know that. What are you gonna do with that eight hundred thousand dollars that's sitting there? It can't ever be used for anything else.
And if the fund is still being used, it can't be
It can't be.
Closed out.
Can't be closed out and transferred.
Just.
Even if it's what, what I, what I'm trying to do is we need to stay at the mic. Let's come up with something so that Jean Wolf doesn't just jump on because it's free. Because, yeah, yeah, if I don't, you know, I'm foolish if I don't. If you're gonna pay a hundred, if the county's gonna pay a hundred percent, why not? It's, you know, I'd be foolish not to, and so would the other nine. They'd be foolish not to. So even if we I don't know. I, I don't even know financially what five percent would do. Instead of ten, five percent would be a hundred dollars a month, that would be twelve hundred a year. Uh, it, now you're getting closer to where I would have to crunch numbers with my current insurance to see if it would actually pay, because it's a thousand dollar deductible for me, so I'm gonna pay another I thought, a twelve hundred on the county side, which I'm not sure if Blue Cross will pu- pick up the hundred percent. But typically, what I've dealt with when we've had dual insurance is one insurance will pay their amount, and the other insurance will pay a hundred percent. The end, the way it worked, my wife, my wife had Blue Cross Blue Shield, I had different insurance. Because hers was, she had the job that was primary for her. My insurance paid a hundred percent of whatever hers didn't pay, just paying a hundred percent. It was, like, we had some very good insurance. Now, I don't know if it works that way here, because it'd be reversed. I don't know if they consider me an employee. My retirement insurance would consider my Blue Cross Blue Shield through this, through here as primary, so I know I'm going off a little bit here, but my point I'm trying to make is I would rather see something so that if you're gonna pay a hundred percent, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna grab it. No, why not? I'm foolish if I don't. And so are the other nine, so I feel we should do something to try and
Are you saying more of them?
Just because it's free that I don't grab it, you know, it's setting out on the curb, well, I'm gonna take it and run. Well, as soon as you gotta put five dollars on, then people drive by. So even if, I don't know.
There, there's a couple things, Jean, with this. So I'm gonna talk budget-wise. Since it's in a fund that is already funded, if we approve a budget, whether it's, uh, we pay a hundred percent, or they, you know, or they pay, we pay ninety percent, it's not gonna change our overall numbers in here because it's coming out of that fund. Second thing is legally, I don't believe that we could tell somebody they couldn't take insurance.
Oh, I know that.
You know what I mean, so.
Yes, I know that.
But I, I don't disagree with you, that, I mean, i- if he didn't have the insurance, and it was because he had to pay the premium, and all of a sudden you can get insurance for a year without a premium? Yeah, you, you, you'd be dumb not to do it.
Exactly.
But.
And I've never paid into the fund, and now I'm gonna get money out of it, so to speak, 'cause I know a lot of, I've heard that comment, well, I've paid into the fund for twenty years, and now I'd like to recover some of that. Well, I've paid a dime to the.
That's my question. I've heard it, I'm gonna use Carmen as an example, I heard it a lot of times when this first came up. That is employees' money, and technically, you're saying tonight, it is not employees' money, it's a fund money, that's what.
Yeah, it has been referred to as employees' money, however, to build it in there, it was a premium payment, so if you had the insurance, and you had to pay the premium, it had to go in there. And they had to have a reserve, so.
And the employees paid the premium.
And the employees paid, it was taken, right.
So.
Just like we're paying that two hundred dollars or whatever now.
Right. So.
So it is employees' money, but it is also county money, so
That's what I, that's what I, I mean, it's.
Where the one year came, the ten percent of the employees, that's how.
And it was just.
And I, did you just pick that, like, did you just decide, Carmen, that was like a hundred percent, or?
No, we looked into it, and we did the percentage, and it was ten percent, the employees paid in, and ninety percent. And this one year, this hundred and fifty or so, this was just the ten percent of the whole thing that's been sitting there over these years, that's what we were looking at. Ten percent that was paid in by the employees, we took ten percent, their ten percent figured out what it would cost, that's how we came up with the number. I mean, the ten percent was just, you know, it was like, okay, we can pay, the employees held insurance for a year, you know, let's, you know, why not, I guess, was basically our, our thought process, so.
Well, I'm, I'm just, my stance is I'm, I'm opposed to a hundred percent.
But then I think you would need to put a motion through Benji if you want something different.
You know, I'd be more in favor of like five percent, or, I mean, that'll even be a reduction, because then at least I got some skin in the game. If I, then I need to do some math and see, but at a hundred percent.
Anyway, to go back to what you were saying, that ninety percent, ninety-five percent, maybe we can maintain that longer too, rather than, you know, then we can maintain it for two or three or five years or whatever. Or maybe if our jail income is pushing us along, then we can maintain it for a lot longer, you know, but.
Well.
That would be, one, one, I would be in favor of something to that effect, but.
I guess, uh, even though I'm not in favor of changing it, I'll concede. And we'll see if this goes anywhere, I'll make a motion then that the employees pay five percent of the health, dental and vision selected plan.
What, what was the, well, okay, motion by Jean to pay that county would pay ninety-five percent of health, vision and dental?
I thought it was just a health plan.
Well, that's what I, that's what I was gonna clarify, is that it was based on the health plan, not.
It was all of it.
Was it all of it? Okay. Okay. I was not aware of that, but anyway, Jean's motion is to have the county pay ninety-five percent of health, dental and vision if an employee chooses county.
Of the selected plan.
Of the selected plan. And the remaining five percent would be employee responsibility.
Yes.
Okay, that's the motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Rick.
Now we'll have our discussion.
Yeah. Any discussion questions? Any discussion? And I just wanted to point out that it doesn't change any of the mills or anything like that, because it's through that fund, it's already theirs, it just,
Yep.
It's not gonna change the budget numbers, it's gonna change how things go within, so. Within the program, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Nay.
Jamie?
Nay.
I'm gonna vote any as well, my motion fails. Any other? No, and I mean, I don't disagree with you, but.
Right.
So, anything else?
I'm done.
You're done? Rick?
We've already discussed the wages in the general fund. I've had questions on the, I call it PERS in the public safety plans, and I'm gonna stand where I was at on that till the leave's on loan too.
Okay.
Liza?
I am, I was just wondering a couple things, when you look on page forty-eight for the special vehicle fund, do you know why the estimated expenditure changed from forty-six now to, it went up almost two thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars, do you know why?
Page forty-eight?
So that's, it's because they've taken more money out of the special vehicles fund?
From yesterday to today? No, that's the one we met with Terry and Ashley.
It used to be forty-six, and now it's up to forty-eight. Forty-six, one, one, three, ninety-four, and now it's up to forty-eight, seven, seventy-two, forty.
And that's for the estimated?
Yeah.
So the numbers shouldn't have changed from yesterday to today?
Yep.
But it's like they already spent that.
All right.
Okay, then nevermind.
Right, if it's expenditure, it's something spent on?
Yep.
And then I had a question on landfill?
Landfill, which?
Page seventy? And I was just wondering, how come from
Yesterday to today?
Yeah, it went from, for the health ins, well, actually quite a few different things changed, but the health insurance one was my biggest concern. It was at twenty-five, seven, ninety-five, and then all of a sudden now it's forty-nine, three hundred.
Yeah, we, we went through those numbers again, and updated them. That's why they changed.
'Cause some of them changed a, a li, you know, with a little bit of adjustment, which I get, but this one is a significant.
Doubled.
Yeah, so that's why I was wondering what happened with the landfill.
It went doubled.
Liza, may I ask, what was, what was the prior, previous number?
It was twenty-five, seven, ninety-five, fifty-three.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Right.
Under which line?
Uh, health insurance.
So when it was originally done, it was with current employees, and then you caught it that it, they have an open position?
So the road department would be the same way then?
And the sheriff's office?
Oh, yeah, and the sheriff's department too.
Okay. Anything else?
Why did clerk of courts go down again?
Yes, because they did not want, they got an open position, so while I'm with today about it, and they didn't want that included in the raise, so we took that out of there. That, 'cause you know, Donna Bookman retired, but we left that open there, and she wanted the twenty dollars an hour for fourteen, I believe it was fourteen hundred dollars or so. Anyway, the amount of hours you wanted on your new position, but you did not want that position to get erased until she hires someone, so we took out that raise, so that's why it went down.
And then how come the treasurer went up? Come on, page six.
Treasurer, oh, phone update. Yeah, it's six hundred and twenty dollars for their phone. At least that's what I got on my, here. I'm looking on that. Six hundred and twenty dollars.
'Cause then janitor went down too.
That's wrong. Okay, janitor, 'cause. Yes, janitor, okay. Oh, we took out Siquee, uh, the payout. And then we.
And then it said computer wrong. There was a bunch in this software.
Yes, spreadsheet. Remember yesterday you found where the.
One knows that one.
Marcy and Nancy, we got it corrected.
And that's how this reflected.
But then shouldn't it have gone up?
Because it was Marcy.
We took out.
There was two hundred extra hours for one employee.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Well, instead of twenty-two thirty, it should've been sixteen hundred.
Should've been fourteen hundred.
And then the benefits for the HR position are reflected in the miscellaneous then, or were the benefits for that? The benefits for the HR position, are those reflected in the social security and the health insurance and the general budget then? Right? Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, Jamie?
Did we ever figure out Cindy's budget, where, where the difference came from?
Okay, here's your what?
Cindy's budget.
Director of tax equalization.
Because she went up as much as she, and that, we thought it was Vanguard at one point.
Right, it's up. She's still.
Remembered?
Didn't.
Yeah, let's look it out and see.
Still on six.
Okay, what did we do? Oh, we put in seven hundred and one dollars for the phone.
Right, but it had jumped like from two seventy-six up to two eighty-nine, and then now it's still at two eighty-nine, but.
Yeah. It was two eighty-eight. It's two eighty-eight, and then we added for the phone. The only adjustment, I don't know, the wages, but according to this, just jumped. No, this is, this is today's, after we updated.
Are you talking the twelve on her line item, Jamie, on page one?
Yeah, because at one time it used to be two seventy-eight, and then all of a sudden it jumped up to two eighty-nine.
And Cindy didn't know either, that's why I'm asking. She's happy to take it, but she.
She is not complaining, but. It's still there. The only thing is, maybe her wages went up, but lately, the last two times we've updated, the only thing we increased was the seven oh one. Was, uh, for the telephone.
Which one do you want? I was just trying to focus on the one we did last time and the one we did today.
I was just trying to go through every number to calculate and recalibrate.
Yeah. No, that's yesterday's, but what we asked yesterday was why did hers move quite as much as hers?
'Cause even on this, on her original transmitter, there was two seventy-eight, which is what it was on the.
'Cause it used to be this, and then on this one, then it went up to the two eighty-nine that it is now, which we got today too, so two eighty-nine, two eighty-nine, two seventy-eight.
This is the original transmitter that she. I don't. No, I'm seeing thirty thousand right here. I think this is what it does. This is, I mean, she has that written there, and seven hundred, and then there's a second. Oh, planning and zoning. Oh. So is that not in there then?
If you're looking at the, uh, Director of Tax Equalization.
Did we not have planning and zoning in Cindy's at first? Is that why it's, it's higher now?
This was page thirty-one.
What'd you have?
Because there's seven thousand. Yeah, well, on Cindy's, like.
Planning and zoning is separate.
But Cindy's, like, original transmittals, like, there is two seventy-eight on this one, but then there's a second page with it that's planning and zoning for seven. But that.
No, right. And we got the same thing you do, we only have the seven oh one inside or.
There's a planning and zoning line on that same page six.
Yep.
It's at sixty-five hundred, and that's essentially the, uh, amount that P and Z members get paid and the mileage that they get paid to come to the meetings.
But it's, well, it's also in the old one. So that.
Yeah.
So that's, that is not the reason that there's a difference, no.
But as long as everything that she's got on her sheet matches what we have in here, I'm, I'm gonna go with adding errors or something, I mean. You know, as long as you look across the lines and she's not getting shorted anywhere.
No, no, she's. No, I just.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that.
No, I understand. I understand.
And that isn't the difference in her PERS? Because that was said in the July meeting, that it was being paid?
Oh. What do you mean? Her PERS.
Her PERS.
Okay, that still is where it's, it's not.
She's still waiting for you guys to make a decision on it, that's why she comes to every permission. I agree, but it was said in the initial
Yeah.
budget, that that, it was put in here, so that's why I'm questioning.
I. No, it wasn't.
Originally, when you originally presented the first one, you said that Cindy's PERS was in there.
Yeah. We could replay the tape, but I don't think we need to.
We can play that.
We don't need to.
I don't know what that amount is, but it's.
Yeah. Any other questions, Jamie?
No.
Okay. I don't have any questions, I just have, I'm just gonna briefly go through something quick. When I look at the preliminary budget, our mill total was ninety-nine point two eight. Amount tax was just under five point three million. If we approve the budget as it is presented here now.
Travis?
Yes.
Okay, now look on the first page, um, of the general fund, 'cause everything that you guys requested went into the general fund. And when we put everything in, um, and we checked with Linda, and we checked with the state tax commission, and we also checked with the auditor, that it was the two numbers, okay, the total levied is still good with all the additions. But now at the top, the final appropriation is higher than the final appropriation that was approved. So that's where we have, so we can say a hundred. It's about a hundred and fifty-nine or over. So the appropriations. Hundred fifty-eight thousand over the appropriation line. And we checked because we wanted to make sure, 'cause I know that you guys have talked, that you could, you know, change the, uh, reserved, but we can't.
Well, no.
I mean, this appropriation, we have to keep the final appropriation where it is, but, but when we do change the reserves, it doesn't affect the appropriation. The appropriation is what we set up here for our expenses. Right? So you have to change something in expenses in order to take it out, to put it in. So that has to get lowered before we can approve.
Over the mills before?
That was what I was trying to get at.
And, and the mills, you know, they're good, but see, they also, you have to look at the final appropriation and talk to the state. So you've got two numbers you're looking at, and the mills at the bottom, they're good, but the appropriation, we can't go over that one eight. And that's where when we put everything in that you guys requested.
I just thought we couldn't go over the mills.
No, and that's why we checked, we checked with the state tax commission, we checked with the auditor, and we talked to Linda about it. And they said it, it's that top line, it's that final appropriation.
It's both.
And both of them, yes.
You can't go over the red, you can't go over the red one on the bottom, and you can't go over the red one on the top.
Right.
So you're saying we have to cut a hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents out of the general fund?
Is it that much? So where did you use the hundred and eighty-three from, Travis?
The red number minus the seven million, nine ninety-five, nine fifty-nine.
That's what I got too.
I got one fifty-eight.
I got one fifty-eight.
One hundred and fifty-nine, three twenty-nine.
Oh, it's seven nine seventy, not seven nine ninety-five.
Okay. So that's the hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three twenty-nine ninety? That has to come out? Yeah? Well, we've been paying a lot on horses, I don't think that's cheaper.
Probably shouldn't bring up the horses, don't bring up the horses.
So final appropriation is only what goes to the general, general fund?
This final appropriation is only general fund.
Yeah, that's the only one, but that's where, you know, we put it. That's the only fund we're looking at.
Well, what I was gonna say is when I looked at the preliminary to the final. We had a difference of less than thirteen point two three mills, which comes out to one point one eight million dollars, which I was gonna say was a great way to finish, but. So it has nothing to do with the revenue, it just has to do with the expenses?
Yes.
What is the?
So if we pull the sixty-five thousand H R, that gets us down to ninety-three.
It actually reduced more because it would take out of the health insurance.
Yeah, and actually included all that in there. And that came to a total of ninety-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollars for health and everything.
What is, um, like in your, like in the auditor's budget, Carmen, what's the ten thousand for a part-time?
Okay, that was when, okay, when we did the budgets, we went through everything and at the end we talked about H R. And you guys requested me to put in, well, we talked about it, so you said put some in your budget for H R.
For contract.
For contract, right, third-party contract, and that's why that's sitting there.
If we knew why Cindy's was up to two eighty-nine, would that help us at all or not?
Well, it'd be a lot of help.
Huh?
It'd be just ten grand. Which one, Liza?
Cindy's, Director of Tax Equalization, why that's.
Cause it's just her cell.
Up.
It's up, I mean, a hundred thousand we put in there for Vanguard.
Well, the transmitter.
What's that?
The old transmitter and the new transmitter match, so I, something's not calculating in your Excel spreadsheet, so.
Okay, so did we see?
Well, and so even like the books for commission meeting minutes, can't those just be scanned online like they currently are? I have it right here. The one that Cindy submitted, yeah, she gave us copies, that's when we looked at first and compared.
Okay, so you were looking at the auditor, I thought you were looking at the tax.
I'm looking at all of them.
Looking at all. Okay, I wanted to see, wait me up for the tax. This is the copy you gave. Yeah, this would be an original coming from now.
Yep.
And Gwen and I looked, or, okay, Gwen and I looked through with this transmitter and then we're the exact same. Okay, so three, so what you're questioning is why is this? Nope, I'm questioning why this number is two eighty-nine.
That's my own file, sorry.
Because in this, this copy, it was two seventy-eight, which is this number. But the copy from yesterday and the copy from today all say two eighty-nine, right? And, and, okay, so here you had.
But that would be thirty thousand difference, not ten.
Right. These are her wages without any extra in it. And she wrote these in here, so these were her wages, she put in. That's your half. Right, but that would have been what I'd put in for wages, which it also would have put that in there and stuff. Cause when I first did this, I included all the entire menu. It was two seventy-eight here. Okay. This was from.
That was.
No, cause that was after we were.
This is the one, new form. Yeah, but, right, so then, and now it's two eighty-nine and again it's two eighty-nine. That two went down. Yep, but it was a hundred and fifty on the new transmitters. Right, the new transmitters match. Originally, this, we had put more in there thinking we'd need more, but then we cut it down to only a hundred. A hundred thousand for her. For, for the Vanguard. Cause we were, you know. So she put that in there and. Okay, so it's two eighty-nine, the number was the same.
Yeah, there we go.
So you're saying the.
This one now, then we got this one.
Okay, we're questioning how it got from this to this. It's the original transmitter to the new transmitter.
Okay.
Okay. And it went up.
Cause that was a dollar raise.
And this is a dollar fifty.
Some of these are loose lines that they got.
I didn't put in a dollar fifty there because that's where we took it separate, that's what it is. This is the actual dollar. This is a dollar.
Yeah, and those are bouncing about things that you guys are shocked at.
But in. I think maybe I was just wrong, in this budget, in this copy, you said it was a dollar fifty, so that's.
Well, and that's cause I, but I did put it in separate.
Yes, everything was a dollar fifty, but because it was last minute, I met with the department. That's why we separated and threw it in there.
Glenn, she says it's from a dollar raise to a dollar fifty raise, is she saying where it's coming from?
Cause when I did that initial, it was just a dollar and then we met with the department heads the night before and we put that extra fifty cents in a lump sum for everybody. Those wages weren't a dollar fifty, they were a dollar. So we could just make sure we counted the dollar fif- or the fifty cents.
But hers was the only one that was different, that's why it's.
Yeah, but she was in there.
That's that final appropriation yesterday to that. We did like two fifty-five.
We did about two fifty-five. Should still be about this much in there. From last night's numbers.
I just don't understand how it went up so significantly, cause we didn't put that much in.
We didn't put that much in.
It's just ironic that it's the exact.
We did, we did, uh, the wages and.
So this went.
H R.
Fifty. This didn't change that much.
But this wasn't.
So this changed almost fifty.
That's where we had it.
It was the three more that we did. So it's sixty-five, one thirty.
And that's the difference that the appropriations changed.
Any ideas?
I'm hoping to. I don't have any.
We want seven.
This is Denise's.
Seven, this is what we had, now hold on the last one. Seven five eighty-two, two fifty.
Uh, must it, does it change if we go from a dollar fifty raise to a dollar raise?
I just have a question, why would social security go up a hundred thousand?
That was our error.
That was your.
Yeah. So in that, so we put that in there because that.
So it wasn't put in the one before, but you put it in the one tonight?
Yeah.
So where, where does?
So that's partly where we're, it was. A huge gap that we have, right?
Cause we were at seven, seven million five hundred eighty-two.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. And now we're at seven, we put in two hundred and forty-five thousand. And now we're at seven nine ninety-five, I mean, we're like. We're like a hundred and sixty-eight thousand higher than what we put in there.
A hundred of that is the social security.
So we're still sixty.
Fifty thousand of it is, um, the H R.
I already added D H R in there.
No, it's benefits.
The benefit?
Yeah.
Can't be sixty-eight thousand.
No, but it was.
We're still, from last night's numbers to now, we're still off by sixty-eight thousand.
Health insurance is.
It doesn't matter, cause we're doing that.
It's a wash, it's a common health fund.
And the county share in retirement.
That was less than what it was.
That went down from yesterday.
The next is four twenty-five and this is four thirty-one.
Want to increase the miscellaneous by fifty thousand? Did we cover that five times already? Pardon?
Anybody know offhand what we have, uh, for ARPA funds remaining?
Ah, I do not.
Sorry. I have an idea, but I didn't know what that number is.
Yeah, I'm not. I do, I do, I do. Oh, here they are. Okay. Okay, those are the ones that, two hundred and eighty of it is for the financial and the rest was for the chiller and the boiler projects. At the end of August, the cash on hand was five hundred and thirty-five, four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. But that's all been, it's gonna be used for the recettes and chips projects and then the financials.
I just like to know how we got from seven five eighty-two, we had two forty-five and we had seven nine ninety-five. We actually added three forty-five, but it's a hundred thousand dollar error.
Plus thirty-one thousand four for benefits.
Thirty-one thousand four.
On the new target.
Well, we gotta make some cuts.
Sixty-five, uh, we did.
Can we, uh. Take a five-minute break?
Five-minute recess? Okay, let's take a five-minute recess. Okay, let's take a five minute recess.
Unless it was from yesterday. Oh, that would've been yesterday.
This is, okay.
So this is ten. Yeah, so let's look at this one. What we just said. I thought that was. It's a real, this is our original preliminary budget in the new form. It was the original.
Are we reconvened? Are we re.
Is it on? No, what I mean is the recording.
I just have a hard time believing the numbers because of what you guys have told me. I'm still like twelve thousand short of this number.
Okay. Well, uh, I'll call the meeting back to order and then we can continue discussion.
Well, all the appropriations that we put in, plus HR, the benefits, Medicaid, the wages, a hundred thousand dollar error comes up to two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars. We add that to that number, that comes out to seven nine five eight. And. That would still be over, but it's still, it still doesn't match the numbers that we got here. At seven nine seventy. We would still be. These three right here will make the difference if you move it from this one.
What number did you try to add?
Well, it took. If you told.
Right?
Yeah, it's each other. Medicaid, wages, a hundred thousand. To about three seventy-six, four hundred. If you add that to.
Well.
If you add that to, what, to the number they gave us last night? If this is correct, I don't know if this is correct either, but if you add that number in that number, it comes out to seven nine five eight. Which is different.
Okay, so here's yesterday's, right? The seven five eight two minus what we have to stay under, it was two hundred and thirty, right? That's what we had to play with. And then today now, we're over by that. But the request along with our social security is three seventy-six four. That's what we put in, that's what we put in today.
This is what we put in, right?
Yeah, but you gotta remember, we also included, you know, benefits.
But when, when we talked about it last night, we had four hundred.
Okay, and that's where I was looking at the mills. We're still under the mills.
We have five.
But I didn't bring this up and that.
We had four hundred and seventy something dollars.
Yes, we did, and we're still under there. But that's why we called the state auditor, we called the task commission, we talked to Linda. This is also the one we have to watch.
Did Linda see the final numbers again, Carmen?
We did good on the mill.
So if we go.
I think she cares. And this is these numbers.
Right, seven eight two, that's what I got.
Right.
Nine seventy, that's what we have now.
Right.
But this is twelve, this is twelve thousand higher than what we put, this is twelve thousand higher than what we put in from about yesterday. We put thirty-one forty, which we had set for benefits. We put sixty-five for HR. We put fifty for Medicaid, we put a hundred and thirty for, for, and that came up to your numbers also. Uh, three hundred and seventy-six, four hundred. That came exactly what I got.
Okay.
So now when I add that three hundred and seventy-six to this number last night, it doesn't come up to seven nine seventy. It comes up to twelve thousand dollars less than that. We still need to make some cuts, but it's not this number, that's what I get. So if you take your three, four, we'll take your number, three seventy.
Yeah, three seventy-six.
Three seventy, okay, I got the same number you did.
Okay.
Three seventy-six, four hundred. Okay, and add that to what we had yesterday, cause this is what we have. Seven.
There's some other numbers.
Five eight two.
Two fifty.
Two fifty. Five seventy.
Right here.
Eight, nine five eight, cause we were at nine seven zero. That's where I'm getting those descriptions. I mean, I'm using.
Okay, so this, nine seventy, okay, but that's, uh, okay, let me write that down because that would be something. Find out the difference.
So now, 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 if you take that number. Okay, now if you take that number and you remove this one, this one, and this one. We're, we're off, we're off by one, one forty-six now. You remove those, it's exactly, if the number numbers match, cause that's what we put in, is what we took out. Is what I'm, what I'm getting at. If you took these portions.
All that we took.
Yeah, now we, we put them in there last night. Now if we took this portion off.
It's not in your.
This is the thirty-one for, this is.
Okay, the thirty-one.
That's benefits. This is HR.
Now remember the benefits, they're distributed, the general fund only has like seventy-four percent of the benefits. The other benefits, like road department, that's.
Okay, now do the benefits go to the general fund or do they go?
General fund is, is out of the entire health and the benefits, it's like seventy-four percent or seventy-five percent is general. And then the rest of it goes out to the county road, the landfill.
Well, I mean, this is the number that you guys said, this is the number you gave, gave me that, that we gotta, we're gonna pay thirty-one thousand, four hundred dollars for benefits for HR person.
Oh, yeah, yes. That is in the general.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I said. So when I add up my numbers, at seven five eight, comes up, and then when you take these two out. That draws exactly one forty-six, exactly where we need to be. But we would still, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not agreeing that. This number is correct. That's what I'm saying. From what I can see was what I.
Okay, okay. So then there's something else, this.
We're, we're not, that's our, but we're twelve thousand.
Right, because only a hundred and fourteen, that's the ten percent. And when we went through to the adjusted things, so, okay, so let me find.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
If you take those three out. And that was a true number, we would be back down, we would be, we're almost right where we need to be. And you could, you needed a little bit.
Here's some numbers that are different though.
Five minutes.
Yeah, five minutes.
Down, up, up, down, up. So.
From last night.
Yep. So it's not just the ones you're.
I'm saying, I'm just saying that I don't, I don't believe, either this number wasn't correct or this number's not correct, one of the two. But that's what we're basing it on.
What's your difference? What do you got for a difference?
From last night till now?
Yeah, but what you don't agree with, the number you don't agree with, put that in your calculator.
Okay, this is the number that, if we, everything that we added up last night and put in, was what they said, benefits, HR, Medicaid, wages. And they made a hundred thousand dollars, that's three hundred and seventy-six dollars, four hundred dollars. If you add that to what they said they, we had, yeah, last night.
Okay.
Where is it now? I lost it all, the papers. But if you add that to.
That would help out.
That would, that would, you add that to, that's nine five.
What were you on for?
I came up.
Terry and Jim, Terry and Jim, what's LEC remodeling in the sheriff budget that's not, wouldn't be in building and grounds? Three eighty-seven. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Contracts, yes ma'am?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not looking to touch it, just wondering. We're bringing back super seats.
Just because of the policy for that, you guys were talking there, but it's gonna jump on. We did add that.
We added one, we counted for one person jumping, you know, because they all of a sudden were gonna get free health insurance.
So that would.
But we didn't.
So take twenty-six, four hundred off that.
Twenty-six.
That's part of.
Twenty-six thousand?
Yep. Yeah, twenty-six thousand, four hundred. And see how your numbers look.
So, just a question.
Yes.
Page six, general fund expenditures, buildings and grounds, eight hundred and fifteen thousand. So does that still get run through there even if we're applying and using ARPA funds for expenses?
Okay, Jim, okay, so we've got ARPA designated partly for that chiller program.
Yeah, part of it, but part of it's not from the original property. There's like fifty-five thousand something like.
But what I'm saying is, should it be run through as expenses within the general fund?
This, this eight hundred and fifteen.
Or should there be another.
Thousand, one hundred and fifty, that has nothing to do with ARPA. That's something you're actually milling for, for next year's projects, right?
But, yes.
Eight hundred and fifteen, you have it under, uh, buildings and grounds, eight hundred and fifteen thousand. Okay.
So what I'm saying, it shouldn't be in the general fund expenses.
Part of that is being paid for by ARPA, correct?
Well, there's none left. After, we figured it out.
Yes, we did, yeah.
Cause we're gonna use the rest of it for the original, cause that was allocated.
Not only, I know we said our two eighty on there, but that about, there wasn't much. But I know, um, this eight fifteen had nothing to do with ARPA.
I'm gonna get one of my sheet wet now, right here.
So why would we, why would we put this twenty-six thousand in the general fund for that? If all that money has to come out of that, from that special fund.
Oh, not all of it comes out of the special fund.
The healthcare fund.
Right. Ninety percent of it has to come out of the general budget.
Out of the general.
Yes, because you guys, the people, most of the people that are probably gonna jump are in the general fund, I would think.
So I mean, all, if we, if we go back to what we were originally, so let's say, let's go back to our, our ten percent. All we're gonna save is twenty-six thousand.
Well, really, the health insurance is coming out of that fund, it's not coming out of.
Only ten percent.
Or what, right, but that doesn't make a di, it's, like you said, it's a wash.
Right, it's a wash, yes. Yep. Because if, there's a transfer on that sheet to cover that money that we account, when we, a hundred and fourteen thousand. Right here, this is the transfer in to cover that employee ten percent that you guys. But when, when we were gonna do a hundred percent, which I think we're back to that now, right?
We never changed it. It got brought down, so nothing changed on that.
Right, you have this transferred in, but then don't you have it calculated into here?
No. Have transferred calculated into here.
Okay, into here.
Yep.
Right, so even though this number does not affect this number. This number does not affect this number, does it? Nothing, I don't know if.
Yes.
This number does.
Right, no.
Cause this is an expense. Is the expenses.
Right, should be the same as the last page under the spreadsheet where.
And you went past it already. It's right, right here. Would be this. So if I take one million fifty thousand off here, this goes down by a million, which. That goes down by a million. All right, so.
Anything you take off the expenditures, anything you have to pay for the expenditures.
Right, so now, even though Rick said. It's a wash, but if you subtract that hundred and fourteen, if we, if we would say no, then we wouldn't have to transfer that in, but by the same. Meaning, this would reduce by a hundred and fourteen. So this would come down a hundred and fourteen.
So a lot of the expenses are gonna be paid by items that are not general fund eminent, as far as.
Because this is expenses, the expenses would come down a hundred and fourteen. So yes, Rick, your question is correct.
Do you need this much money for part-time position?
I don't think so.
Right, but we can affect those. But on top of that too, you know, I'm thinking a little extra.
If you concede. If you did this one, this one, this one, plus the twenty-six four, if you had, it would be under by. Three ninety-eight, eight twelve, it would be under by, uh.
So to answer your question. They, there's a figure in here of a hundred and fourteen thousand for health insurance. So if you went back to the ten percent, they could take a hundred and fourteen back out of the. So if you went back to the ten percent, they could take a hundred and fourteen back out of the health insurance, one million, that dropped that appropriate, or that down, a hundred and fourteen thousand. And you subtract like the HR sixty-five, and you're well under your one fifty-eight. You gotta throw some numbers around, which we can sit here and look at these numbers all we want, things gotta change.
The HR is gonna go down more than sixty-five, it's gonna go down ninety-one.
Okay.
Ninety, ninety-seven, six.
Or you. Don't want, don't want daggers coming from out there. Or you cut wages, instead of a dollar fifty, you go down to like fifty cents and see how that changes things. Those are, and the fifty thousand of MACAD. That would be an easy one, because we haven't been doing that. The sixty thousand, sixty-five for HR. I'm not disagreeing, though, we need HR, but we don't have it now.
I would rather.
But we have to make some cuts.
I, it probably doesn't make a difference, but I would rather the, we, us five, not take a dollar fifty raise that they have put in here and leave it higher for the others.
And that's, that's fine, but that, I don't think that's gonna change it much.
So now, if we, if we go to the ten percent.
It's gonna change it, uh.
If we go to back to the.
How much?
Original healthcare, we can put twenty-fourteen back.
Total.
You don't have to transfer that in then, correct? So that changes our, we'll, we'll take that down, right?
It'll take your expense down.
I didn't catch that, Rick, what were you saying?
Yeah.
We go back to the original, our two hundred dollars of original insurance. What we were talking about, we would be at, that would be, that will save us one hundred and fourteen thousand. So we need to cut another.
Another forty-four thousand.
Then I would rather see the fifty from MACAD, I guess.
We were at five, uh.
What did you say, Jamie?
She'd rather see the fifty from.
And it's not on top of MACAD.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just getting started on these numbers. I'm just looking at where we can go, but I'm not saying like eight. We're at one, we need a hundred and fifty-eight is what we need. So if you start with. You can start with this one, taking maybe half of that, just to start with, or something like that.
What are you cutting out?
I would start with, uh, MACAD. Okay, and if we just, I'm just.
Yep.
Starting to work back.
We gotta, we gotta go somewhere.
One thirty-three.
Twenty-five, you say?
Yeah, he took twenty-five.
Cut it twenty-five?
I cut it twenty-five to start with. And we have, if we go back to the original insurance, we're at one fourteen. So now we're down to, uh. We need nineteen thousand more.
Jamie found nineteen thousand more.
You can either cut, you, you can cut your wages on your HR.
Or we could just cut the ten thousand that's sitting in the auditor's budget for the HR stuff that we're having.
That would give us another, because we don't need both.
Right.
And the, what's the, the twenty-hundred?
Now we're down to, we're down to nine thousand more that we need to work out.
I gotta let me think.
We, we need to come back, we need to get down one fifty-eight.
I finally got, I finally got to the MACAD one, what was your next one?
Okay, I'm at one fifty-eight. I ju, I just started with that.
You have twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Maybe one goes less.
Whatever, but.
Carmen, in your budget for books, for commission minutes.
Those are commission minute books.
If we go to one, ten percent.
But why was that not included in, why was that added after the fact and not in your initial budget?
Because I didn't know I needed them, and I didn't, yeah, we just got them, like, found a source, even finding the sources hard. But I just found it literally last week.
And it changed from last year to this year, of not happening.
No, it's always in, there's seven hundred dollars.
What have you got on your list?
And I got one order to cover us. And then we need to order, like, last time they ordered it was.
So we got MACAD's goal.
Uh, what, what, how far down did you go?
Took it off.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Then we're already past it.
And then you said the insurance.
Well, well, that's, we, what is your total come up?
Hang on. Wait, Jamie's.
On the building improvements, what are the specific items?
Without the insurance, we don't have the insurance on us.
Jim? Jim, so, um.
So we need to come up.
Our raise, this is the line item. This is the line item. Jim, is that six, one, six, the total cost of the furnace?
This is where we gotta, a minimum, we gotta take down one fifty-eight, so we go. Sixty-six, we go sixty-seven. Or we better not, if we don't go back. Sixty-six.
Yes.
This is what we have, Travis. I'm gonna go to sixty-six.
Oh, but you got total sixes. Subtraction.
Right.
I was the other way, I wasn't gonna, all I need to go down.
But.
The health insurance is a hundred and fourteen.
Yep.
Because we would be, uh.
Then employees still get their raises.
Yes, I'm not gonna.
And we do not, which is, okay, and right now.
We're at one, what did I say?
End of July, and that's what Jim and I were talking about.
From one fifty-eight.
Okay, so.
Which one was the number right here?
It was, did you, are you two? Were you cutting MACAD completely?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
No, it's not a hit on the head, but if it's a new, unless it's, I'd rather it be forty-five. Oh, no, no, this is.
We're ninety-two, with what you have, and then we're for insurance, we're gonna be under by.
All for the furnace.
Well, I'm gonna go just a little bit more to, because our, um, our social support stuff will go down a little bit too, because it's.
But I mean, we're still the. Twenty-two, what you did.
A hundred thousand.
Hundred and eighty thousand.
Fifty, so thirty-nine hundred.
No, but I mean, we subtract that from the one fifty-eight, we're gonna come up with a hundred and eight.
That's what I said.
It was one sixty. I thought it was one sixty-eight we needed. Was it one sixty-eight we needed, or was it one fifty-eight? Okay, then we're at one oh eight. Okay, then just, fine, I, I still, that can come up.
Yes.
We had it figured out.
Okay, wait a minute, we got confused. HR right here.
How much?
No, this is different, this is.
Recorder's on, so I can't say things. Well, okay, so if we do this one, and this one, and this one, we're weighed, we're, we're golden. Okay? Don't worry of us.
It's a little different, now, it's just two things, so MACAD, the HR, stuff that, permanent in your budget, and then the health insurance. And then we're golden.
Then we're weighed.
Whichever, whichever one we want.
But that's the expense, right?
First was what, ten?
Ten. I don't think you have.
So that's.
It says heating and water.
Insurance, that's one.
Oh, no, we need a water. And that's right.
No, but I mean, that's fine, but what I'm seeing is it's just five.
I mean, yeah, I mean, there's other ways, I mean, how are we, how are we, yeah, there's.
But we are.
We are.
I got something for you.
Because we, we really don't get that to hand, and.
You know, why would you have that very much?
No, no, no. And I was just trying, I'm trying to.
And I still agree, I'd still find. Right, I don't wanna cut very wages. I don't even, I just, I would rather that.
Just like you said, those three, MACAD's, and this one.
You wanna do those three, I'm not sure I have it.
Yeah.
I was a convertible. What was that, twenty-six thousand, four hundred, four hundred?
Oh, it was for the extra health insurance, in case someone jumped on, so that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm open to it, so.
Jamie and Liza did some number crunching, and they came up with, if we take the fifty grand out, MACAD. There's ten thousand in the auditor budget for HR, we pull that out, and put the health insurance back, we should be fifteen thousand under.
In the right direction.
Okay.
And you still have under twenty-six thousand, that if you took the insurance back, or an extra twenty-six thousand, that too.
Okay, what do you wanna do? Who wants to make a motion?
Okay, before we, can I get the exact number, okay, so I got fifty thousand for MACAD, ten thousand for the auditor, now the health, how much have you got for that?
One fourteen, that's what your number says, one fourteen.
Well, I just wanna.
That's what, that's, I'm just, that's what we're going by.
Okay, but one fourteen for health.
That goes back, transferred in, and we can, we don't have to.
Travis, is there anything else?
Hold on, so. The one fourteen, because you figured it as an income.
Yeah.
Is what I would like to do. I thought there was. Yeah. Okay, but that's what we're talking about, the one fourteen for health, okay, and that was it?
And then that is, the, the one fourteen coming in, you might as well leave it in that account.
Oh.
Because it would make sense to pull it in as revenue. So that'll drop the revenue a hundred and fourteen. It'll be a wash, but you'll have to pull it out of the revenue and out of the expense. It won't change the appropriated amount at the beginning. Taking it out of the income, I, I know won't change the appropriation amount that I get, but you're gonna pull it out of the health insurance, one million.
Okay, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, who's, who's doing our motion?
I'll make a motion to remove the ten thousand dollars on line item one sixteen from auditor's budget for HR, fifty thousand dollars for MACAD, and a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for employee health insurance.
Okay, motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Then we'll have to make a motion after this to put the health insurance back to ten percent.
Okay.
Okay, keep that in mind.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing done, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
I make a motion to move the health insurance back to the ten percent, good employee contribution.
Okay, motion by Rick to reestablish the ten percent employee contribution to insurance, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion?
Discussion, that is, health, vision, and dental. Correct?
That's what we pay now, right? Health is vision and dental, okay.
That's your motion?
Correct, I'll make it.
I, I don't mean to jump.
No, no, no.
I'm just gonna make sure we're right, because it's just gonna.
No, I mean, I'm not jumping ahead of Travis here, he's chairman.
For discussion, you, I can amend my motion to say. I made the motion, what did?
You, you said health insurance.
Health insurance.
Yep. Health.
Okay, so now we're gonna make an amendment?
Yep. Unless you rescind your motion and start over.
Okay, I'll rescind my motion, so I'll, I'll rescind my motion and start over.
Liza seconded it.
She pulls her second, okay.
I'll pull, rescind my second.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Rick.
All right. Oh. Same thing has been put in that.
Tell him you're busy.
Um, I move that we remove the, we'll return to our ten percent for our health, employee contribution for our healthcare, vision, and dental.
Okay, motion by Rick, is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing done, Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Anything else?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the budget as amended with tonight's motions?
I would like to recess and have the numbers punched in and the first few pages printed, so we can see it before we do that.
Okay.
Can we do this over?
I think we can, so, is there a motion to suspend this special meeting, so that we can open up the second special meeting?
I'll make a motion to suspend this meeting. Temporarily, until we get our numbers.
Okay, motion by Rick to suspend this meeting and open the second special meeting, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing done, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Our second special meeting is to address, um, the State Fair Annual Meeting Delegate. Is there a motion to approve that agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda in the special meeting for the State Fair delegation.
Okay, motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza.
Sorry, Jean.
Any discussion? Seeing done, Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion is approved, okay.
Okay, I wanna clarify, that motion, you guys, Gary Canal is the delegate, because I didn't.
We have to, we haven't got that far yet.
We haven't got that far yet.
So what motion did you just make?
We just approved the.
The agenda.
The agenda for this special meeting.
Yep, okay.
For the second special meeting.
Right. Go ahead, Rick.
Okay, to start with, we, I wasn't on this side of the table last year, and I was involved in the delegation. When we, when we have a delegate from the commission, what happens is, the way this thing works, the commission is allowed to appoint one delegate. In the past, it's always been Gary Canal, he's the president of the State Fair Board. The Fair Board also is allocated one vote to, as a delegate to, and last year it was me. And county agent is allowed one delegate, and he, they delegate, they, uh, it was, last year it was Rick Scrava. So when all this confusion and everything, it was assuming that the three of us was Fair Board stuff, and that's not correct. So, I would like to make the motion, do I need to, I got to rescind, or, or?
I, I think the cleanest way would just say, um, you, you would move that the motion made at the last meeting was incorrect based on technicality, and then we'll rescind it.
I'll make the motion that, uh, the, the motion that I made at the last meeting was incorrect through the technicalities, and that's.
Okay, motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any discussion? Seeing done, Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
I'll make the motion to, to appoint Gary Canal as our commission delegate.
Motion by Rick to appoint Gary Canal as our, um, delegate from the County Commission, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any discussion? Seeing done, Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. So with that, that special meeting is now adjourned, and we will be in recess until we have, um, budget numbers for the first, um, special meeting, okay?
It been helpful?
Very, very helpful, yeah. It's a good thing that the dialogue continues, people learn, input, you know, it just creates a, creates better outcome, I think.
We should've had more. Resistance between our, between us though, that'd have made it more interesting.
Gee.
Actually, I think we've.
No, I really.
I think we've just handled it.
Yes, I really appreciate all this commission, even though we don't always agree on everything. There's no yelling, no screaming, no name-calling, I mean, that, yeah, that, there's a lot to be said.
I reflect in commissions in the past and a lot of this exercise you just didn't see done in, in a special. But. It's good. It's good training for everybody.
Yes.
We're gonna get better, better at giving information, you know, so that I know what you guys want. We're all working together. It's good.
Well, I think we've taken more direction from public input than we ever have in the past.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's appreciated too, I know, well, it's, it's. It's a good thing, input is great. We all have ideas and then they collaborate, you know, come with a, come with a good outcome. So now we get done with the budget and move on?
Yeah.
Let's.
Yeah.
Yep. Seems like we just had one. Depending on where you live in the county, you just did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jean, what was your trip to Boston?
Pardon?
What was your trip to Boston?
It was interesting. You gotta understand, I'm very hard of hearing. Hey? Yeah, huh? Yes, so I didn't hear ya. What was your last question? No.
No?
No. I actually don't. Let me say, say it this way, I don't have any family that lives out that far east. Now, the correction, I have a cousin. Whose son lives in Maine, but it's, I, I don't know if I've ever met that, so he'd be what, my second cousin? So I don't know if I've ever met him. But, uh, they moved out there, oh gosh, in the seventies and rarely came home. And so, and I didn't meet him when I was off there. She actually lives in Phoenix, she retired. Her husband, when he retired, they moved to Phoenix. And he passed away in Phoenix and he, she lives, still lives there and the son is still in Maine. And she just happened to be in Maine when we were there, but we, we couldn't make it work. It was, cause I had meetings every day for four days. And literally booked our, booked everything and then I mentioned to her that we're going to Maine and then she said, well, I'm out here, you should try and connect. And I said, well, it's gonna be tough. But those are quite the meetings also.
Did you go over there for a while, started?
Yeah. And there we. Oh wow. There's a, a lot on financing, money, and then the other part is, so to speak, is, um. The future of things, the internet of things, the satellites.
Like the technology, kinda?
Yeah. And it's amazing what's out there in technology, it's unbelievable. When I go to these and then I come back and I tell people, okay, sprayers. When the sprayer that's out at our farm, every, um, nozzle is, is controlled by computer. So when you do a, do the end of your field, you know, you turn, so you have these teardrops always on the end. Well, now you do your headlines, you go perpendicular, and that thing just goes on, off, on, off, so you don't overspray. They've got the technology now, this conversation continues, they have the technology already where you can take a drone. And it flies across the field, it identifies the weed and it sprays just that weed, it spot sprays. The technology's there now, I haven't heard of anyone doing it yet, but I've heard of drone spraying, but that, that technology's out there already. So this drone just flies and you sit there and you just control it, it detects the weed, it sprays the chemical, moves on. And that's really being pushed environmentally because of just broadcast spraying and.
Well, wouldn't you think like fuel purposes too, that would be different, because then you don't have a big tractor going through the field.
Oh, yeah.
That too, so fuel-wise, that would be.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Yep. And the, um. Well, even our, I use our loosely, cause I don't, I'm not financially vested in the farm, I just work for them. But the air seeder, for instance, right now, it, with the GPS seeding, it, it stays within, I think it's within about six inches or eight inches. A variance as you go down the field. You know, so that's, it's unbelievable, that's why when you see those lines now, there's, they look like they're perfectly straight, well, they pretty much are.
Yeah, we, we have wind horses, uh, do ours, yeah, them lines are just, like you run a straight line, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's, um, and then you, um, there is technology out there where it even gets more precise, but you have to pay for that. And, um. When you go, for instance, corn, cause corn you have typically thirty inch space, I think it is, and you seed your corn. Now you take, when you're done, you take that, that information, that map, and you put it in your harvester, we call them combines. And it'll just follow that. It just goes right down the road, right where you seed it, it's unbelievable. You might have to correct it three inches back and forth at times because of the satellite variance, but, you know, so you just hit, I just hit the button and moves it over three inches and. Unreal.
Yeah, it is.
It's getting to, and they already have the technology that, so you, you planted your corn. And it's thirty inches between your rows. Next year, you plant corn on the same field, you move over, say, twelve inches. Yep, and the next year, twelve inches. That technology exists, we, we don't have that. Uh, it's just crazy and the egg, what they, what they're coming up with and then just, just the internet already, you know, um, Musk, Leon, what's his name? Leon Musk or?
Yeah.
Elon. The amount of satellites he has up there already for. Pardon?
Starlink.
Starlink, it's unbelievable, people, unless you follow it, you don't even know how many, he's got, I don't know how many thousand, like. Thou, several thousand, um, maybe six thousand right now, and he's gonna have way more. It's, and now the thing with, now we're gonna get into my technical field more. Is if you use, like, the satellites are twenty-two thousand miles, geosynchronous satellites are twenty-two thousand miles out in the sky. So if you use that, like, for inter, internet, well, it might work if I'm gonna, you know, bring in a picture of Marilyn Monroe or Brian Pitt. Cause I don't care how long it takes for that information, but for critical services, that don't work because the lag time for that signal to go up twenty-two thousand.
And come back down.
Then it sends it back up and back down to you, I mean, you're talking a couple, two, three, four, five seconds. That don't work, it, it, that's too long for critical.
Going back with the, uh, PS two and a in satellite dish.
So, and that's what the whole idea behind Musk's, uh, his, their, their low orbiting, I forget how far up they are. They're still up there a long ways, but they're not twenty-two thousand miles. And if you, at times you can see some of those, they streak across the sky.
Yeah.
You'd look right, yeah.
They just in a nice roll.
Yep. So, yeah, it's.
Yeah, he, that.
Technology that's.
The artificial intelligence they're coming up with, amazing stuff, amazing stuff.
Well, even just in the medical field, like before, if you had to have a hip replacement, you were out for a long time now, they just do little slices in and bust it up and suck it out and.
Yeah.
Which is ridiculous what they can do now.
Laser surgeries.
Crazy.
And they, they have the technology where the doctor sits remotely and does the surgery on you with robotics.
Yep. It's just crazy.
I'll tell you what, you thought George Jetson was way beyond his time, we're getting close.
Knocking at his door.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, his doctor, like the doctor over at, you're talking about like that, or are they gonna do that? There was something else too, wasn't there?
Yeah, it's, those, I really, well, because I was in my field of expertise, I, I just, that intrigues me, I.
I didn't follow sports, so I, I followed technology and, uh, science, yeah, very interesting stuff.
One of the first, uh, network security guys.
I grew up with black and white TV. transistor radios.
Yep, everybody had to get up to turn the channel and then some nights you're like, turn the aerial this way.
Yeah, yeah, just surround beer.
Yeah.
Watch Gunsmoke in black and white.
Yeah.
Yeah, the old transistor radios.
Yeah, those, those, uh, security guys, they're great to listen to, I mean, they're the first ones, my arm never goes down, you know? So when you use a password, um, do you use the, like, a name of your pet? Or your wife's name, or your mother's name, or. And when you, uh, when you, when you enter that name, do you capitalize the first letter? My arm's still in the air. And he said, yeah, he said, capitalize like the third letter. He said, it's unbelievable how much you increase your security, because we, by nature, do the first letter. Capital G, small e, small n, small e. He said, make it small g, small e, capital N, small e. And he said, it, it's unbelievable how you increase the security. And then, um, yeah, the things he came up with. And, oh. What's the most common or most used password?
Password.
Password.
Yep.
Password one, password two, password three, password four.
What's the second most used password?
Oh, maybe?
One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah. Just the numbers.
Yep. And that, that always makes me think of that, uh, Spaceball show. When they, when they wanted the code to get through the, to Earth.
Yeah.
One, one, two, two.
What?
Remind me to change the.
That's great.
Lock on my luggage. Yeah, it's.
Well, we gotta figure out how to charge Google and, uh, Elon Musk, Twitter and Facebook to use our infrastructure.
Holy cow.
Huh?
You wouldn't even be able to see the numbers change like go so fast.
You know, they're riding on our, our fiber optics.
Yep.
You know, if we could figure out how to tap them in, tap into them and charge them.
Yeah.
You gonna be at that conference, Linda?
Yeah.
Good deal.
I'm on the board.
Oh, you are, oh.
So, two boards.
Did you take Darby's spot?
No, I, I'm, I'm gonna go to court with the court.
Oh, okay. Oh, wow. Were you guys nervous about the state taking you over before, or didn't it really matter?
Yeah, we were, because, you know, we have a chief of justice out there pushing you. People tend to pay attention to what he says, but, um, there was too many undecideds, too many variables, too many, what's gonna happen to this office, what's gonna happen to that office.
I was concerned, you know, I was like, oh. Even just like in the smallest things, you know, like, does that mean that you guys would have to work eight to five instead of me? You know, I was trying to, like. Oh, you guys do already?
No, we, we would've managed.
That's what I thought, yeah, and I'm like, geez, that'd make you guys stay here in an empty courthouse for an extra hour every day.
I can take an hour off for lunch.
Yep.
That was, well, just optional, we started that.
Come on, they had to change, what, four numbers? Three.
Yeah, cause make it, take it out of the, there, and then, yeah, two numbers.
It does all the calculation for you, so it should. So much for assuming.
You know what that does, Jack?
Uh-huh.
Right?
Yep, and I'm usually right with the front part of that one. Now we figure, tomorrow maybe, I don't think tomorrow, maybe Saturday.
Aren't we in a freeze warning tonight? Tomorrow.
Isn't it tonight, then, tomorrow, possibly?
I, I got it on my phone tonight, but I don't know if that was.
But, uh, harvesting. It's gotta quit raining and the sun's gotta come out.
Yeah, you guys are not in a good position, I follow that out there.
I'm just hoping that that white stuff doesn't come early.
I saw, thought I saw one floating around today already.
Don't, don't be looking.
Looks like pretty good weather coming for the next couple of weeks after this.
After we hit this dip here, yeah.
Yeah, they got. Next week is. Upper fifties, lower sixties, not much chance, there's, oh, you know, there's still always a little chance of rain every day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, always.
But I'm gonna be gone again, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, I already told my boss. I know by Wednesday, definitely, um, I'm less rain, but, you know. Harvest state again.
I still can't believe we're already like this far into October. This year's just been like this, we're being like, I just, months are just flying by and.
The older I'm getting, the quicker, faster they seem to be going.
They do, don't they?
Summer's here.
Exactly.
I think I went out fishing three or four times this year, that's it. And I used to go home a lot. I gotta go get a full-time job again, so I have more time.
I don't know if that's how it works, I hope I have all the time. I don't know if that's how it works, I don't think I have all the time.
Since I'm retired, and many people I've talked to that have retired, it's unreal. It's good to be busy, though.
It is.
I couldn't, if I weren't busy. I got uncles I gotta help with, three of them, so that.
You remember, right, for the winter, you mean, like, get their house set up for winter and stuff, or, just in general?
Like their finances, I help them with those, and. One of them's in a nursing home, and two of them are in assisted living, and they just rely on help, so I help them. I'm not gonna say their names, 'cause the recorder's still on.
Yeah, that recorder has a mind of its own, takes a long time to kick on or shut off.
I don't know if she, that's still on record, that'll drive people crazy to watch that. We're sitting here doing nothing now.
Yeah. Come on, do you know what the final thing is?
I like I mentioned a, a, a map up there in the county, would be nice. Would be nice for you guys and for everybody else to follow. You do a lot of that roadwork, talk and finding and stuff. It'd be pretty interesting where we could catch up with what roads you're talking about, you know?
A nice size one, too, you know, not just.
Yeah, fill up a wall.
Just a big.
Fill up a wall.
Yeah.
Cause they, um, I know they.
Laser pointer.
They have.
Interstate Engineering could donate one for us. I'll be right, we'll let her buy it.
Well.
There you go.
I don't know where they got them, but the road department over, the, at the road department's office, they have a couple of them. They're only, uh, way bigger than that. They're, they're quite large, but they're not that big, but a guy, a person could get one, I'm sure. And then they have the county road numbers on there. Because.
We got a tracker disaster program. Get your money.
There you go. It's, uh, cause I don't know, and I still don't know all the roads, but boy, I'm learning. And so, I know, you know, now I know with seven, five, what's the next one, eleven?
Yeah.
That'd be pretty much south of you, and then thirteen south is App.
Yep.
And is that the one that goes on the right on the west side of the mine? Is that thirteen?
Well, it'll turn into twelve.
Okay, and then way on the south end is fourteen, I think.
Right.
So I'm learning. I knew mine where I grew up, twenty-six, twenty-seven, nine.
I can't do it by Eugene.
Yep, that's twenty-six, twenty-seven, nine, nine, nineteen, twenty-one. But I, I, there's no way I know them all, like.
No.
Probably no, like, ten of them. Fifty, sixty way out.
So you went out on Sunday to Eugene, right? Are you staying overnight, or are you driving back and forth?
I plan on spending the night. I think they're gonna have a hotel room. I think it's at the Radisson.
I gotta drive back and forth, for a month. Now you're gonna check, don't you?
Check my mail. Should be in my mail.
Sunday's usually just like the opening kind of thing, you know, the one that Travis and I have to go to, right?
Pardon?
On Sunday? It doesn't start till like three or something?
Yeah, and I don't know, is there much other than?
Didn't say there was much, cause I didn't wanna.
Yeah, I don't.
Waste, not, I guess I shouldn't say waste, but I didn't wanna utilize gas money for that. I was just gonna come on Monday morning.
Yeah. There we go.
Got it, huh?
Your hotel confirmation for Dappo at Radisson, yep, from Gwen.
There you go. I hear the New Mexico place is really good in Bismarck.
Which one is that?
Maya or something like that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Eating place?
Yes.
I'll have to look it up. Maybe eat at Charos and Tequila?
I have not.
It's up, well, hate to use these landmarks, but up by the North Wall Mark.
I know, I know exactly what you're talking about then.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we were just there the other day, very good.
It's really good there, hmm.
They have a Texas Margarita, I think it's called.
Well, they have a number of margaritas.
Oh, I'm gonna try one.
Good burrito.
They, um.
Good burrito you had there, Tom?
Yeah, they made.
Very good, very good.
Yep, it's good. I like it. I think it's the Texas Margarita, and they use their, um, it's not Jose Corvo, it's a, um.
Patron?
Patron, and then they would use, um, another, uh, uh, grab our name in there, he told me. It was, was good.
Yeah, they have a collection of, uh, chiquitos there.
Yep. Yeah, they got a few dollars worth of Patron in there. Yeah. So what'd you call that place?
Maya, I think they said it was, or Maya, Mayan or something.
Are they up there on the north end also?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, that used to be a different cafe, and they took it. Isn't it?
But it doesn't open till three, cause I wanna go there one day, but then I'm like, shh, I'm not gonna wait around Bismarck till three, so.
They are, the same owners owning another one in Bismarck. Not, not the same name, but this owners own another cafe in Bismarck. You know, this way, I understand it, the way I was told, I, I, and I don't know which one. If I'm thinking of the right one.
I would think so. This one is new, or newer, you know, and then, like I said, I just heard from a couple of people that they said it was very good.
I'm gonna have to tag it off pretty soon. Maya's.
Yeah.
Was that located at?
Sixteen oh one West Century Avenue. I have to pull it up on the web, so that I can say, well, you turn by.
Right.
A landmark.
Right, like Comfort Inn or, you know, Harbor Freight or.
Where in the heck does that at?
Are you allowed?
That is set down by Texas Roadhouse? You've been there, you say?
No, I haven't been there, I wanna go there.
Oh!
By Texas Roadhouse? Where am I gonna be by Texas Roadhouse? Oh, you know what? It's in the old Johnny Carino's. That's where it is.
Is, and that start, there's a, there's a McDonald's, and you go north of that, too, there's a Taco John's, and you go just north of that.
Johnny Carino's, yeah, just a little bit to the west, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's another way to say it, it's just west of the parking lot of, uh.
Lowe's?
Lowe's.
Is that where you go?
Old timers, old timers kicking in. Yeah, just west of the Lowe's parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I heard, like I said, I heard from a couple of people that I know down in Bismarck that have been there, and they said it's really good.
That's what we enjoy when we go, go places like Boston, we just, where to eat, oh my word.
Great, we always try to make sure that we don't pick, like, the chain kind of things, like, go to an authentic place or something that's not.
I used to go to some other meetings, and it was a re- the retiree retiree, uh, I wouldn't say club, but it's not a club, the retiree, um, chapter had their annual meeting at the same time, so they were there. And there was a gal, I got to know her, a retiree, and that's, she'd go pick out these ma and pa places. I just, man, she'd come back and then she, she'd hug me down, and she would say, you gotta go here for breakfast, and you gotta go here, cause you'd go to the buffet in these five-star hotels, cause that's where they put you up, because that's where the meetings are, you know? And there's nothing, and the, the breakfast, like, forty-five dollars a plate.
It's ridiculous, isn't it?
And you get yogurt.
I know, for like a little clump of something, you know, like.
And I go, the one of them, I walked in, and he goes, can I help you? I said, yeah, I'm gonna check out your buffet. Oh, do you want a table? I go, no, I'm gonna check your buffet. I come walking back, he goes about a minute, I go, no, you got no bacon. And he looked at me and I go, you got no bacon, see ya, and I walked out.
I didn't have bacon.
Yep. I go, yeah, but they were charging, I'm like, holy cow, you don't even have bacon. So then we'd go down the street, it's way cheaper.
Great, you had a great big giant plate, you know?
Yes, a ma and pa breakfast, yep.
Mm-hmm.
There you go.
Thank you, Carl.
Daughter?
Yeah, your daughter.
Oh, you just did the front pages?
Yeah, because that's the only one, we don't have time to print the whole thing, but we also need to go in and do the whole thing, but this is the only one that was over, and that's the only one you need.
That changed.
Now you can approve it.
Now we're within range, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
So after.
Thank you very much.
After page eight, we can just use our old one.
Well, yeah, we've got a whole window, and we need to change everything, so everybody's paying ten percent again, and the next meeting, we will have that all complete.
Oh, okay.
Along with AS four hundred sheets, cause every single one of them has to be signed by your chairman, but yeah, you guys will get copies, but we need time to get that put together.
Okay.
Because we got other stuff.
Okay, and where are the other three all?
I have, oh, well, you got me, huh?
I know everybody doesn't wanna drive down here again.
Well, there's no need to now, you know, you've got.
No, I mean, we could've, we could've said, well, we can, you can do this, and we can go back, like.
No, no.
Tomorrow afternoon or something.
This worked out, no, we don't wanna come back. You guys got a convention next year. This worked out.
And I don't think it's too scary.
Okay, so.
Charles, can I?
I don't know if they caught my memo that, like, you're just coming. I thought everybody was coming through your door.
It's gonna say there's three of us.
True. True statement. However, I'd hate for them to be waiting around forever, and then be like, and we're done.
Just about too late for meeting adjourned.
Oh, okay. It would've been fine, Gene. Just, when you turn the lights off, let me know. Thank you for the date on it. Whoever put the date on it, thank you.
Oh, we ran the message to Gwen.
Nope, not yet.
Is it still recording?
Yep, it was.
Okay, ready? Nine, nine twenty-two, I will reconvene the special meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. In front of us, we have a revised general budget, uh, no, general, general fund budgets. And I haven't had anything. So, what are the commission's wishes? New chairman, maybe, I don't know.
We're going downtown after this, Wanda.
I move to approve the budget as presented.
Well, seconded. Motion by Gene, seconded by Rick, to approve the budget as presented. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Gene?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I will vote aye as well. Motion approved, budget approved, meeting adjourned. Nine twenty-three. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, and then, like I said.
You guys gotta.
How do we meet?
I just wanna make sure, like, I'll have everything ready next page, and then, uh, Travis can sign it all. AS four hundred or.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you, Karen.
Yes, thank you.
All the copies here.
Now, okay, with the final, does, everybody wanna copy that file, or are we? Let's get on and sign it all, and then if you guys want copies, then let.
Or, scan it, but yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that'd be better, scan it.
That way, everybody knows it's.
Good idea, okay.
Soil conservation and tax control.